It's written into the homeowners association.
They tore it up, so they brought gravel in, they're gonna make their parking here. And I don't think they can keep a landscape place at their house in a subdivision.
Oh. Like running a buck business out of there?
Yeah.
Oh. That might be in their homeowner's agreement too.
Did that help you?
Yeah.
Did we help?
They should have a homeowner's agreement for that subdivision.
That's why they called it a common area. There is no homeowner's agreement. I guess they had, because that's what I had.
Right, and that's what I have.
And so, no.
But he said they still can't look like that in their area.
That was the question. Because he's got so much room here.
Yeah, but it's still, it's, uh, it's in the road right away. It's still a road right away, even if it's this width here. It's still a right away, they gotta have so much width.
That's why they called it a common area.
Okay.
That's what was confusing.
Cause I know the one over on up near.
I feel like you're missing.
They had to go in a pullback across the road. They couldn't do it.
Should've worn cheetah pants or something?
In there, and that's why. I would talk to the planning section and see what they had to say about it.
Okay.
My suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah. When they, when they accepted it, they get it.
Hey, good, how are you? Thanks. It's my Friday shirt.
Like a half an hour ago?
That's kinda why I wanted to ask you.
Yeah.
I figured it would probably be this.
And if you need a copy too, I think they're making copies for the ones that get printed copies, so.
Alright, we're ready? Alright, we have a following meeting to order, it's about six minutes after four. Sorry about that. You guys over there, who are we looking at? We're gonna have an approval of the agenda, do you guys have anything you wanna change, other than opening it up?
Do you wanna do a little?
Well, we can do.
Or, what happens?
No, that's, that's fine. You can do a little call, we all know each other and whatever, but go ahead.
Omar Ugi?
Here.
Benzi?
Here.
Wes Foster?
Yes.
How?
Yes, here.
Rosecrans?
Here.
Pionts Bliss?
Here.
Alright. An absent, yes.
Absentance.
Right.
Clerk, challenger.
Thank you. Okay, this is appreciated. Now, the agenda, although, before we do the agenda, you have a piece of paper that I put on each one. And the only reason, in fact, I didn't have one for my fill. The only reason I did that is because I wanted to make sure that, well, thank you. That I was understanding how that worked. So, keep that in mind as you. You know, as you, as we go through meeting, because all it is, is just kind of an information thing for me. Make sure I'm looking at this in a correct way. Okay? Alright, now, approval of the agenda?
I move approve the agenda. As printed.
Seven.
Okay, you don't want Karen doing.
Pionts Bliss?
What is this?
The agenda.
They're approving the agenda.
Oh. I'm sorry, I thought Marie was asking questions. Yes.
Rosecrans?
Yes.
How?
Sure, yes.
Wes Foster?
Yes.
Benzi?
Yes.
Omar Ugi?
Yes.
Okay, public statements is our next, number three, limited to three minutes.
Good evening, Judy Gardi, Park Lake Road. I understand part of your discussion tonight will focus on the CIPs. I just would encourage you to support and include the funding for the nature trail in the 2022 budget. And also, ask if we could consider the cost for the estimates for the expansion of the senior center. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anybody else? Okay, looks like we're going to go with the work session. Number four on our agenda. You want me to go ahead, or do you wanna go ahead?
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Um, I thought we would try, um, something just a little different tonight. Um, because the police department and the fire department are such a significant part of our budget. I have asked both Chief Lyle Lindemulder and Chief Dave Snyder to join us to give us an overview of the changes that they're proposing in their departments for 2022. Those can be found on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine of your packet. And I realized that, sorry, excuse me, under budget. Oh, twenty-eight and thirty. Um, and I realized we hadn't gotten that far yet, and I think we came up to page twenty-two in our last meeting. Um, but I think this is, uh, as I said, a significant amount, um, of of millage that we collect for public safety. Um, they are their, their own fund, and they are responsible for the, part of the health, safety, and welfare of our residents here in the township, so. I would invite, um, Chief Lyle Lindemulder or Chief Dave Snyder, whichever one of you wants to go first, um, to come to the podium, and. Lyle, you wanna start? Um, just give a brief overview, and, and if anybody has any questions about what you're.
I don't have my budget in front of me. So, um, if I just, if there's questions about any of the line items that are in there, in the, in the things that we increased, or, or did, I, I did explain them on the bottom of each page that I submitted to, um, the superintendent. Um, I think maybe that there's a couple of the big things of why it's more from last year, and if you want me to go over those, or you have questions on any of them, I'm more than happy to try to explain anything, so. The biggest items in my budget to increase from last year, um, number one, we're, we'll be replacing the last 2015 Tahoe, we didn't do any cars last year. Uh, we did them in eight, nineteen and twenty. Didn't do anything in twenty-one, we have one 2015 Tahoe out, so there's an increase there. Um, that'll be the K nine unit, so we need to re-outfit that with K nine, um, stuff. It will not fit, the old stuff will not fit into the new. So we'll have to outfit that car completely, so that's that line item. Had nothing in it last year, obviously, it has the, the fifty thousand, uh, in it this year to, to buy the car and the K nine kennel and have it swapped over. The other big change is, there's, there's, uh, I asked for an additional, um, officer to bring our number to a total of thirteen. Um, and fourteen, including the administrative assistant. If you can remember, some of you can, some of you can't, cause you weren't here, but back in seventeen, uh, the police and fire board and this board allowed us to, you know, apply for the community policing grant to increase our numbers. Um, we did not get that grant, we applied again in twenty nineteen, uh, again, we were denied. The need for that thirteenth person, that thirteenth police officer, has been here for a long time. Um, I know it's, it's an expensive thing, and I don't know if we need to increase the police and fire millage to do that, uh, that's an option. Um, but I have people working the road out there, um, by themselves, all the time. In this, this, this world today, this, we gotta, we gotta try to eliminate that. One person is probably not gonna totally eliminate that for me, but it was significantly reduced that. I ran a couple of numbers, and out of this year, it's been a hundred and sixty-nine days that somebody's been out there working alone, whether that's night shift or day shift, out of the three hundred and sixty-five, and that was through September. I didn't go past September, cause that's when I ran the numbers, so I haven't done October, November. This year's been a hard-hit year too, and so I didn't go back another year, COVID has really done some things and put us off. Um, overtime is, is way high. But, the overtime that we do is not, it's mostly covering shifts. And those hundred and sixty-nine days that I talk about are not the days that Friday and Saturday night, I refuse to have just one person on, so there's always overtime. If somebody's off, I always put a second person on in overtime. So I didn't count those days, that person would be alone too, if I didn't fill that with overtime shift, so. If we would've gotten the grant in twenty seventeen for twenty eighteen, that grant would be up by now. We'd already be funding that person totally by now anyhow. Um, if we would've got it in nineteen, we would've had about a half a year left, because that grant's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it really only covers about two and a half years of a three-year grant. Um, so that's why I'm asking for it now, I know money's, it could be tight, it is tight, I know all the, the stuff. Um, but I think it's a huge benefit, not only for not having these guys working alone as much as they are, uh, to get the community policing aspect going, we need more people. With a twelve-man department, ten of them that are mostly on the road, because the lieutenant and I are pretty much running everything inside, it's not like we're out there on patrol every day. You can only work them so much overtime, and they're gonna be burned out. You just don't have twenty guys to pick from to say, hey, can you pick up an extra, uh, date this week or next week? When we have somebody down, we had, you know, one of the officers, uh, off for three and a half months with a broken arm. Um, I gotta fill all that, so, um, you know, you start to burn these guys out awful quick too, when you're trying to work them, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve-hour shifts out of fourteen days, so. That was that big increase, um, that's, you know, my justification for trying to get that done. We're, we're just under the, I mean, the national average for police officers per capita of residence is, you know, between one point six and two point three, um, per thousand. We're just under one, so, and I, I don't think we need to, I, you know, nowhere near. I think we could just start bumping this up a little by little here to, to take some of this off, we can do a lot of things with that. Any questions on that stuff?
If we add the additional, uh, officer, as you have done here in the, uh, recommended budget, I also noticed that the overtime goes up rather than down. Can you talk, I would've assumed it would go down, because now we're paying less overtime, but that must be wrong.
Well, and I'm not gonna say that it won't go down, it's very possible that it could go down, and I think it will go down. The reason I did that is because if I don't get that person, I'm gonna need that overtime for next year. It's just, I might already be over this year, and I'm gonna be asking for an amendment here, probably next month, to, to get that out of the red. So I did it both ways, we could probably readjust if we need to do that, and, and see where we end up, but, yeah.
Thanks, that's helpful.
So you're looking at, um, additionally hiring someone that would eventually replace the retiring officer?
Okay, I can get into that part too, that's totally separate of that person. So if you want me to, I can do that, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions on the extra officer, or if you wanted me to do something different.
I do want a car, do you think that, um, cruisers are gonna be available?
I'm not sure that's even gonna matter. I, I, I may end up not needing that money, if we cannot get one.
Okay.
It's very possible that that's not gonna happen. The orders came out, um, in early September. I had my email into the rep, uh, at that time. The order process closed within four days, GM took no more orders for Towels, or any of their cars. Um, he ordered a bunch, the dealership ordered a bunch, and he was going through his emails, and I haven't heard back from him on who got prioritized where, so. If I don't get one, I'm probably looking elsewhere to afford, or possibly a Dodge, I know Duette Township just went to Dodge's, cause it's the only thing they could find. Know that I, they're not proven yet, but some of them are getting them. And the Fords are, the, the Expedition, not the Expedition Explorer, is out there. Um, I don't know if any are available either. If I have to make that last car go one more year, I can, uh, we will make it work, so. I may have to increase our maintenance budget on that, but we'll make it work if we have to.
In terms of that, and I've never asked you this question before, do you need greater flexibility at the end of the year to be able to jump on ordering for the next year, or?
Yeah, we did that two years ago too, we did the same thing, before the budget was approved, I needed to get it ordered, cause ordering shut down. It hasn't, this car shortage and the chip shortage is what caused it, and this usually goes on well into January, February, you can order too, and then they come in. Just these last couple of years has been really bad for that, so. Just two years, even in twenty, when I was nineteen, they, they shut it down before the end of the year, before the budget was approved, so. We asked, and they said, go ahead and order, it wasn't.
I was trying to remember, I thought Dan did something different.
Yeah, we went to Dan, and they said, go ahead and order, we weren't gonna cut it, so.
Do we have any part-time officers now?
We don't.
Okay.
Technically, we have Andrew, um, but he went full-time elsewhere, so I, the availability is almost zero, so.
Okay.
And here's the problem, everybody's hiring, nobody wants to be a part-time police officer somewhere unless you could find somebody, it was like the perfect scenario when I got Andrew. You know, he retired from someplace, and he's young enough and could work, and, and, you know, he changed courses, and so. Because training somebody up that wants to come in, and they're looking for a full-time job, I'm gonna lose them within a few months, and I can't spend all that money trying to train them. Putting a vest on them, putting all the uniforms on them, and then they leave, like, real quick.
Duck-tailing that, that plot that you got, Lyle. What about your academy people that come out to keep your certifications, or their, whatever they're calling them now? Um, to keep those intact, so they don't have to go back through the academy? Would that be any help at all for part-time?
In my opinion, no, because you're getting a brand-new person that needs four to six months of training with one of the officers that's already working in order to get them comfortable on their own. So we'd be paying them their salary, everything they got, and then they're out searching for a full-time job, and then by the time they get done with my training, they're gone.
No, I was thinking more along the lines of, not only keeping their certification up, but being able to take the place of the second officer. Realizing you've got a trainee. Even though they're just coming out of the academy, and they're supposed to know everything there is to know. Uh, yeah. I know, but I guess if you're looking for someone to ride along, not a ride-along, I always, I always rode alone, so. You're right, the times are changing.
Yep.
When you're talking about having to have two officers. So if you, and the real thing would be either weapons or fights, or, you know, domestics, whatever you're, you know, dealing with, is why you would need two. The other for writing tickets and et cetera, we don't know what's gonna take place. So I guess what I'm thinking, and what I don't know, and you can be the one to answer it, is if you have someone coming out of the academy that you could hire, that would be that second person in the vehicle?
You could, but you're gonna have to uniform them, and start training them, and pay them, so, it's the same thing, you, you know. They're, they're not ready to go out, nowhere near by themselves when they come out of the police academy, no way, no how. Um, ours are, the average right now is probably four months, three and a half to four months. Like, our last hire that we got from East Lansing, they had two years of experience, it took about eight, twelve, landing, take twelve weeks, took ten weeks, and he was ready to go, so.
Yeah.
That's just learning our procedures, our policies, our way of doing things, our radio system, just changing everything, but it took about ten weeks.
Okay.
Where the, the one that came out of academy took almost four months.
Okay. No, that's.
Then the other thing that she was, that Karen was talking about, um, I just asked for Officer Welch, who's gonna be retiring in May. I just asked to hire his replacement in January, starting in January, so that he's ready to hit the road running. By the time May gets here, that three, four months of training is up. Um, wasn't a significant amount of money, but it was definitely money, cause we'd be paying both of them while he's here training, but as soon as Greg walks out tomorrow, May first, he's ready to jump in, and he's already on his, on the way. Otherwise, May first, we were short another person for another four months, so.
Are you gonna get them out of the academy, or are you gonna hopefully get them?
We'll just open it up for app, we don't know, whoever, you know, they have to apply, obviously, so.
I don't know, when's the next school?
Uh, I think one just got done, and one starts in January, so. But there's minimal things for uniforms and stuff, if we get the new people, other than that, there wasn't really a lot of big changes. I think we're gonna have to up the fuel, we were talking to the superintendent this morning, gas has doubled down since we did these budgets in August, so, and the fuel, and we're running out of money for it this year, so, because of the prices, so. I think Dave's insane for resigning, so.
Yes, yes. Any additional questions for Chief Lindemulder? Thank you for your time. Chief Snyder?
Uh, the line items that I have requested to increase, the the biggest ones that I can think of basically are building, maintenance, and repair. Uh, buildings getting to be twenty years old, and there's some flooring that needs to be changed, and so that's basically why that line item is going up. The biggest, the huge one that we're looking for is to add two full-time personnel. Which, I know is huge, but, uh, the day and age of people volunteering, and, and especially day people volunteering, we don't have GM with multiple shifts, and guys working nights that are willing to volunteer during the day. Yes, they're paid on-call, but it is a lot of time and effort that you're volunteering. So what we're looking to do is put two people on, but not two people at the same time, they would be one person days and one person nights, and overlapping shifts. Um, we have, already within our current budget, started with people that are working six to ten weeknights, and that has helped a lot with helping coverage. It's just luck of the draw, we had one today that nobody from Bath Township got to the call, they wound up covering this with Duette Township, so. It, it's happening, in the day and age of, like I said, people wanting to, willing to, and wanting to is part of the problem. Part of the other problem is, is with Lyle, is training. Training's required, training's required to keep up, but there's a huge amount of training when they initially come in. And so you take a guy that's in his thirties, and you say, hey, I wanna be a fireman, I wanna help out the community. And you look at him and say, okay, you got kids, yep, yep, okay, well, you're gonna spend six months in class before, you know. There's thi, there's things they can do around the fire department without that, but to be a certified fire one and two, fire one and two person, it's, it's about six months of two evenings a week and some weekends. So there's a commitment, which is hard, and getting harder. We're required to have the same amount of training as any other full-time department anywhere else in the state, same i, same amount, so. That's why the request for the two people to kinda help share the, the load of what's going on with myself and Kevin, who's only part-time with the fire department, so we're technically at one and a half FTEs at the current time, and so, we're looking to add it, go to three and a half. So that's the extra personnel. I don't remember anything else that was really going sideways, other than, like Lyle said, the gas, but we, we're all realizing that in our pocketbook for sure, so.
What is a normal roster, it's varied over the years, but what's a normal roster for a, a full volunteer department, for us?
For us, we, we are, years ago, have been approved for up to thirty.
Okay.
And right now, we've got another guy that's leaving soon here, so we're about fourteen, fifteen, I think, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head, where we're at, cause it kinda fluctuates a little bit, but. We're, we're trying to put out some, some ad campaigns through our, our fire department Facebook, and things like that. And previously, that's brought at least some applications, and this last go-around, it didn't even bring in applications at the current time, so we're always looking for recruitment and retention opportunities, but and I'm not giving up. Seventy-five percent of this country is still covered by paid-on-call or volunteer fire departments, so. And I think we can do a fine job.
Can you describe your full recruitment strategy for volunteers?
Currently, all we've got is going with the Facebook and word-of-mouth as far as recruitment at the current time.
Do you think there might be strategies that might be even more effective than those two?
Sure. I don't know what it is. We definitely have looked at a lot of different things, and just went with the Facebook, because that seems to be the biggest thing. Like I said, running an ad in the paper, I don't think is gonna be the way to go, but I, usually word-of-mouth, friends. We've done things like at Bath Days and community events like that, as far as putting up a booth, and, hey, you know, come join us, come be one of us, but there's, we're willing to try to do anything, definitely, you know, if that roster was at thirty, that would be great.
I'm just wondering, instead of making statements about people's willingness to volunteer, perhaps putting more effort into volunteering, or recruitment for volunteers might be a better strategy.
Okay.
How close does someone, I'm sorry, have to, have to be within?
The, the way it's written is a responsible, or a reasonable response time. As, as we find people that get further and further out, what usually happens is, actually, the, the, the person is all fired up and gung-ho, and comes to everything. And then, because they're further and further out, they, they reduce their responses, because it's, you, well, I'm gonna get there, and I'm gonna wash the truck, you know. Um, we're changing that to the point of, when you get here, you get a couple of people here, go ahead and respond also, and if they need your help, then great, if they don't.
Is it five minutes, is it ten minutes, I mean, what's the?
There is no, there is no minute rating, or miles rating, or anything else, first of all, we can't legally do miles.
Okay.
Um, we just call it a responsible, or a reasonable response time. Um, there's some people that live, we've had a couple of applicants that live on N two East Lansing, and that's a long ways. If you're responding fast, that kinda thing, so it depends on where it is, you know, if it's north of Bath, you've probably got a little better response time than trying to come out of East Lansing and traffic problems and things like that, so. There is no set circle we try to go by.
Just a real quick one. When you speak of volunteer, you're speaking of the fact that someone has a full-time job, and then they volunteer?
Correct.
Is that, okay. So, the full-time job, does that interfere with, if we have a fire, where you have, or, or employers pretty good about letting them go?
Most employers are pretty good about that, definitely. You know, it, it depends on the job and what job they do, I mean, if they're required to be there for eight hours putting in that same screw in that same fender. That's pretty hard for them to, you know, to leave. But if it's something that, you know, that their job can be covered or put off till tomorrow, a lot of them let them go, for sure, so.
And obviously, that's what we mean by volunteer.
Correct.
Could actually come in and.
They're still paid.
Work their full-time job, and then, and volunteer.
Right.
Okay.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm listing as volunteers, yes, they're paid on-call, when they're here, they're being paid. But they're volunteering their time and their effort to come from work, home, meals, birthday parties, you name it, so.
Thank you.
How many FTE were built into twenty twenty-one's budget?
One and a half.
You're, you're underspent so far in that line item, you're just over, well, just under fifty percent with three-quarters of the year have gone through.
Correct.
What, what's the discrepancy there?
COVID. Most of it is, the, the discrepancy of the salaries that's there is the hours that people are coming to the station.
Got it.
And instead of getting six, we get, we're lucky to get one or two. So theoretically, that part of the budget was built in, it's always a, a, a build-in guessing game, because it depends on how busy we are, which we're increasing too. Um, we're real close to being over last year right now, the number of runs, but.
Is that the reason that it only goes up by about fifty thousand, even though we're adding two full-time people?
Correct.
Cause you're factoring in, it's still COVID, we're still gonna have less paid out than that?
It's, we would pull the, the salaries from that, and we're looking at taking it out of the truck replacement fund for the benefits.
Alright, that was my question. When the money's left over, and COVID has done that, is, is that returned to the general fund, or is that staying with whatever department it is, and then recycled, for lack of a better word?
I, I might botch the terminology, but they're a public safety fund now, so now their money will stay with the fund that's left, the money, money that's left over will stay with the fund, is that correct?
But it still has to be budgeted in the future to be spent, it's not like.
It's not.
As a fund, I'll say, but the other fund does.
So that's what we're talking about?
Prior, they were in the general fund, so the money would return to the general fund. But they are no longer in the general fund.
So what happens is, if. So what happens is if the fire department has money left over, but the police department needs it, public safety fund means they go together?
Same, they could have it reversed. Police department, that money, like, well, where the fire department needs it, it'd be the same. Same funds will go to the same place.
No, that's what I'm, no, that's what I'm asking. Is that now that you're referencing it and it's being referenced as public safety, that's the two that have to sit and figure out who gets what. Is that, am I understanding that?
No, they don't get the stuff and figure out who gets what. The township board will figure out what gets what. They can request that, but the township board's actually only legislated by here.
So it does go back into, so it does go back into another fund?
It goes to the public safety fund. That's where it's at. It doesn't go into any other fund. It's in the 205 fund.
And then from that, it's determined?
If there's a fund balance there and they have the expenditures that have to be made, this board will, who's ever seated at this board will take and make the decision of how it goes back.
But every year, the village will fund them first?
No, I understand. All I was thinking was, with it now being called public safety, it kind of goes in together, and then it's determined who gets what, which is kind of what the village is supposed to be a 50/50. I know it's not, but...
But the idea is that the money would not be carved up every year, that they would request a new budget every year, we would approve the new budget. Not that we would be going into the fund balance and deciding...
In their fund balance, a safety, public safety fund balance?
Right.
Why wouldn't you go into that? You said...
We could, but that's not, they're going to come and ask for a full budget again. That budget may include part of the fund balance or may not, but it's not like at the end of the year, the chief sit down and start trying to divvy up money.
Okay.
Can I ask another question? You said something at the end of your answer to my last question about the benefits, and that was another question I have. The benefits in 2022 go down to zero, but you said something about a vehicle fund?
I didn't say anything about a vehicle fund. No, I believe there is a line item for vehicle replacement that I, we've, it's just something that's there that I had nothing in creating.
You had said that we were taking the money from somewhere else for benefits.
Well, okay, you're right. It basically, you're right. Out of the vehicle replacement fund, the line item that was going to be there was where it was going to come from.
I may have made a mistake, because that shouldn't be blamed.
Okay.
Because with, with him...
It's hard to hire two full-time people and put benefits to zero.
Well, my point is that him and Kevin should have, so that's probably a mistake on my part. I have those calculated, and it's possible I just didn't queue them in, so that will need to be addressed.
Thanks.
My apologies. I did not even realize that that was like...
Just trying to give people insurance over here.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Dave, when do you plan on replacing your vehicle?
The next one to be replaced, the current plan is 2025, which would make it 23 years old. The, our frontline-run engines, the oldest one is a 2002.
Okay.
I actually had that conversation with him. I tried to put together a list. I thought I had more time today than I did, obviously, and was surprised when it was four o'clock. I have in my hand a small list, because there are more items, of potential projects for funding consideration, and that does include the replacement of his engine 64, which from 2002, he's looking to replace it with a pumper tanger at a cost of approximately $750,000. And I believe in the last couple of years, we've had, or certainly might be the wrong word, designated about $200,000 towards that.
We've done $100,000 a year.
I couldn't remember, yes. So we've got about 200, and I'll call it reserved for, specifically for the replacement.
So based on this, then, and these are soft numbers, we're about $550,000 short of that right now. Thanks, Dave.
Dave, I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The road committee is considering, we got a meeting next week, on our roads that we're going to be working on. And we have, in our talking, we have considered Drumheller. Is that going to make any better for you getting to Chandler Road and down to that area?
Sure.
How much time would you figure it's going to save?
A minute and a half, two minutes, probably, because we got to go, we traditionally go up through Webster Road.
Right.
Just for safety reasons of the dirt road and that type of thing, we, you know, especially with the big trucks, you get them slightly...
But if we blocked off that road?
Right. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if we can go out and turn right, and we don't have the traffic that we've got to be concerned about at the corner, at the main four corners and at Clark and Chandler, we would still have Drumheller and Chandler, but with more of a T-intersection, not a four-way. So I don't know what to tell you to get us response time, probably a minute and a half, two minutes, I would say, for us going out and around and, you know, taking care at the main four corners and that type of thing. Lights and sirens don't give you authority to drive through stop signs. You still need to be able to stop. You still need to be, technically should only be no more than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So it doesn't give you free rein to do everything. It's just trying to tell everybody, hey, I'm asking permission for you to move over so that I can get through and help somebody else. So the less traffic in busy areas like that that we can avoid, the better we are. And if we have to, you know, we will do Drumheller Road now. It's just that it's almost probably longer, because we're taking it slower and worried about, you know, putting the truck in the ditch, and then you're not helping anybody.
Right.
So if Drumheller were to be paved, and it became a more popular through fare for people because it was paved, now hardly anybody uses it because it's dirt. So if it becomes more, I won't say congested, because that's probably not a term that would apply, but if it becomes more traveled, does that pose additional issues for you?
Sure. Here again, us pulling out, we got to watch more for traffic coming one direction or the other. I mean, if we're not going towards Chandler Road and we're going east, then we got to be more concerned about more traffic coming there. I hadn't thought of that yet. I'm sure that there's, I know they are, you know, obviously, fire truck signs that can be placed by a station. There may be such a thing that a light that could be activated from our pagers or something, when they page us, that the light could be activated for, you know, 20 minutes or something, so that it's always flashing, so that they're looking at something, not constantly day-to-day, something that would change for them to say, whoa, you know, I need to slow down. Yeah.
Is it all vehicles that you take Webster to Clark, or is it just a larger fire vehicles?
Pretty much all vehicles, just because of the speed and the time and the safety or lack thereof of a dirt road.
So I'm curious why we have paid extra money for chloride for the safety vehicles, safety vehicles haven't been using Drumheller.
Um, I didn't, I didn't know that's what we were.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess, I guess...
Do you know what chloride does to a car? I'd rather not have it on my 20-year-old engine, yeah.
Yeah, you do.
I do.
So...
It's nasty when it's...
Chloride keeps the dust down for the neighbors, so that we're not irritating them. That doesn't really, I mean, it helps hold the road together, but once there's a pothole, that chloride does nothing for that. It just continues to get the pothole bigger. The concern is more of just the literal dirt road, not that, you know, not that it's a bad road, you know. I drive it with my personal vehicle when I want to, but...
So it's about keeping trucks clean?
No, it's not about keeping trucks clean at all. But I, like I said, I don't have a problem going down it. If you're continuously using, driving vehicles on chloridated roads, you get a lot of stuff that's stuck up there that is rusting away. That's not my concern, no. Safety is my concern.
Then one other question. Among the sort of time-sensitive runs, how many a year do you, does the fire department do to that would benefit from the chloriding of Drumheller?
The chloriding or the blacktopping? Okay. I couldn't run you the numbers right off the top of my head right at the moment. I mean, we'd run both medical and fire over there for three apartment, three, four apartment complexes.
You'd like it.
I was going to invite you back to give some comment.
I'm just saying that that helps us a lot, because we have to respond on those roads more than they do.
Correct.
Maybe helps for, you know, the city, especially if we have two dirt roads together. We've got one, and it's all dust. We have to, you know, you like the chloride. We're getting a lot of...
Oh, you're going, you're competing. I think, you want, go ahead?
Go ahead.
I'll clean up the benefits thing here before we go, so we don't go away from here thinking we're doing something wrong here. If I'm not mistaken, in the fire department, you have yourself and Kevin Douglas, who are the two full-time employees, correct?
One and a half. Kevin is technically half the time at the fire department, but yes.
If you look at the way the employee thing, the way the benefits thing is structured, it has to be done this way for the ordinance enforcement officer, which is Kevin, who is the fire marshal.
Yes, correct. So yes.
His benefits are all paid through the ordinance enforcement, is paid by our ordinance enforcement, ordinance, and that's where the benefits come in for that particular employee there. As for you and your benefits that you have, yours are, the only benefit that I'm aware of is you have a stipend for your healthcare, but I believe the rest of, anything else that you have is just like all the rest of the employees, it's spiked up, would be considered a benefit, and actually is a benefit by law, but that's figured into the salaries. It's 745, whatever the number is, and that sort of comes out of the salaries. However, the thing for the, for the, if there is, for the healthcare, that could be listed in 740, you could separate that out from salaries. But I tell you, that's how I calculated, because I signed the paycheck.
Correct.
Yeah, so he had 45, 45 in 2021, and then as of 9/17, he'd used 30,000, so.
And as far as the zeros, we see in this thing up here, which I hate this thing up here, but as far as, as far as the zeros, I like the actual zero. But as far as the zeros, it's up here, the reason why you see zeros in there for 20, in their 19 and 20, is because you didn't have a public safety fund in 19 and 20, it was a part of the general fund, and so there was no history to deal with and no history to work with. But that's the mystery behind the salary thing. However, we could take, continue to have here things that will, that will put 740 on it.
But there is an error in here.
There is an error. I missed, I just, I missed it. Yeah.
Yep. As it's written today, the way we're going to go forward with public safety, we don't have one year in history for public safety, but as it's written today, yes, that could be, that could be looked at. As far as the half employee, I prefer, I see more doing ordinance enforcement than I do the fire thing, but I see, I see him out there and representing the township, and I think him as a fire department more than I do. I'm sorry, I don't look at him as an ordinance enforcement person, not a white ordinance enforcement. But the, the, the actual dollars are budgeted, and if you look it up under the 140 account, that's where the benefits are budgeted for that score. Don't have you go away from here thinking something wrong. We do have, we could, we could change the benefits to that.
Yep. That clarified the zero zeros a lot for me. However, I do have a question having to do with the fact that, if I'm understanding, maybe I'm not, that benefits, the dollars are figured, it is salary? No. So that's why I...
No. If you look at the, all the salary people that's on the fire department, if you look at it on there, everybody gets a salary on there. There's nobody, the FICA is not figured into the benefits section of that. It's figured into salaries, what the total salaries are.
What's the 30 in here that he's spent this year?
It's still, I'm sorry.
The 30,000 he's spent in benefits this year. What, who is it?
He has got this year, and I'd have to look it up, but I don't exactly what it is. But I'm sure what part of it is, I know what part of it is. Part of it's healthcare.
He gets a, he gets a buyout now.
I don't think that, yeah, but the 30,000 is not the buyout. It's, that is a benefit that there's got to be some, and I, I don't know, because I don't touch that part of the budget.
Are you not a mer?
I am, yes.
So it's his mer, it's, it's mer's, it's...
But the benefits line item that's on there has been on there forever before we even had any full-time employees. There's got to be some type of insurance that we have there for...
There is. Life insurance, there's...
For all the paid-on-call guys, too.
There's a whole buffet.
And that needs to be separated out from the, and the reason why you missed it, it was medicine, it wasn't, it was missed because of, there's no history of...
Well, generally, when chief prepares his budget, in the past, they have not weighed in on salary and benefits. That's always come from the superintendent, so.
Correct.
It's not a line he filled in, and then I missed it.
Okay.
Money's there, it's just got to be, just got to be recorded a little different, or the budget. Being recorded in the general ledger is not being recorded there.
You had another question, did you?
No, I'm just asking.
Okay. Anyone else with questions for Chief Snyder? Alex?
Yeah, one more. It was brought up in our last meeting about, there's a fire department close on Chandler Road, closer than we are.
On Chandler Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
East Lansing.
That would be on Abbott Road, down there by Grand River, almost, yeah.
And we, about covering the one that can get there the quickest, but that isn't the way it's handled, right?
No. They, they do the apartment complex that is on the east side of the road that was removed from Bath Township with the annex to East Lansing.
Right.
We cover all of them on the west side of the road that was the annex from Duett. We cover all those apartment complexes and, including the one that was even further south in Tim Hortons. That's ours, too.
Right, right.
The newest one there, the Rocks, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not from closest available. I mean, they, they're all dispatched from Clinton County and Bath Township, and then the ones from East Lansing. A lot of times, what we're getting now sometimes is an ambulance from there, because of mercies and everybody's ambulance shortage, an ambulance, their paramedic shortage, period, nationwide, but they, they would obviously be quicker with an ambulance than we are going to be to get there to help with medical first response. Maybe. Because here again, their ambulances are busy. Meridian and East Lansing are covering each other all the time, so you couldn't say that they can always supply something better than we can.
Okay.
So I'm a little bit confused. So do the agencies not cooperate with each other on calls?
Oh, we do.
Okay. So it's not like if there's an issue over there, there's a road block here at East Lansing, you won't come?
No, that is not the case. No, they would definitely come. It's, they're not dispatched automatically with us.
Yeah.
Duett Township and Langsburger are automatically dispatched with us, and we go the same way automatically, whether it's, you know, if it sounds like a confirmed fire, we're all going to the same place. The first people get there and find out that it's toast in the toaster, then we call everybody off. It's usually, we aren't called to those like that. The dispatcher is listening to the story of, you know, flames and smoke, and then everybody gets, but we, we basically are currently in Clinton County with that. I was approached, or I was talking to a Meridian Township person firefighter the other day, who's working on retiring in a year or so, and I guess Meridian Township is going to approach us to be automatic aid for them. Because here again, they got the same problem. They got three stations, but they got four people per station.
So what's the process of, I develop an automatic aid agreement with another agency?
It's not that difficult. It's basically, instead of a mutual aid agreement, which is what we have with local agencies now, saying that when we come to help you or you come to help us, we're not going to charge you. And so that's what that is. Automatic aid means that they would automatically be dispatched, you know. If they're, I'm sure there would be a dividing line in Meridian Township, but if they're dispatched for a confirmed structure fire on the north end of Meridian Township, we may beat them, as far as that goes. So I, it's a, depending on who the chief and that type of thing is, it's a cultural thing. The full-time guys don't want to call the part-time guys. And I've always made the joke that we can't put out fire because we don't pay union dues. But their union does require that they call back, they put out a callback for all their personnel that aren't working to come in and be able to make money, which, that's their thing first, and then, then they can call for people like us to come help. With an automatic aid agreement, I'm sure those guys would still get called and they'd still come in, you know, to help cover the stations where they're, that are unmanned at the time that the problem's going. at the time that the problem's going on, so. It's something that would have to be worked out across county lines. The advantage to it is that we have, we are, both Ingham County and Clinton County are in the mutual aid box alarm system, which is MABUS, which you guys approved us going into, which is a huge outfit that basically, if, if the county's involved in the fire departments that are in that county have signed up for the MABUS agreement, all the legalese are all taking care of for us, as far as mutual aid or automatic aid, it's all taken care of through them, and so we don't have to worry about making a separate mutual aid or automatic aid agreement with each department, which has been the previous, but.
Yeah.
And we've, we've always had a big one for Clinton County that would cover it all, too.
Generally, the requestor, in this case, if it was Meridian, would draw off a document that we would present to you as a board, and you would go through it and you'd answer questions, and you would, you're approved or denied.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions? Everybody's looking good, okay? So, thank you for your time. Does anyone, excuse me, anyone want to ask additional questions of Chief Linda Mulder in terms of Drumheller, or are you satisfied with what you heard today? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. You can go spend your Friday night if you want to.
Nothing personal, but get them.
Yeah, no, you can say if you want, if you want. Um, I did, at the request of Ms. Gardine, provide you all with a copy of the Bath Charter Township twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six CIP. Again, as I indicated, and I can copy this for you, this is not in a completed or final document, in any way, shape, or form, but I do have one, two, three, four, five, six items on here that I started to acquire, I was in the process of adding broadband when I realized it was four o'clock, so. But these were things, this list was something that I indicated to you when we put it together so that you could have an idea of things that had been requested, projects that had been requested in the past, and are currently on the, in the CIP plan, that you could potentially spend funds available and/or potentially ARPA funds. Treasurer Wes Wasser indicated today that we've received half of our ARPA payment, which is what?
How much?
Six hundred thousand, half of one point three billion.
Six hundred eighty-four thousand. You want to talk about that after just deciding why we're here? I didn't make the board copy just because of, because I'm testing the waters a little bit. You will take and put that in a different fund, it'll have a separate fund itself, I've already identified the fund number, five twenty-eight under federal grants, general account number. We're going to use, we're going to do it a little differently because we've chosen to take it in two pieces versus taking it in one, because that eliminates if we do this correctly of having a single point audit, or if you took it all once, you'd have to have a single point audit, so we're going to call it five twenty-eight point service or one. Obviously, next year, we may get to the six hundred eighty-four thousand or something change, we'll call that zero zero two, pretty genius. And the, I have went over this with the account, but I came over today and, and, and Stephen's early accountant, there is a numbered letter from the Department of Treasury, it's come out July first of two thousand twenty-one, and I have given a copy there, and I've been reading it and looking at it. There's a couple of things I have questions on for you to the auditor or the account before I do the actual, I built the fund, I developed the account in the general ledger, but I haven't moved the money in there yet. I have a couple more questions, I won't hear them, I have questions about, we'll take care of that. We, I've asked a question about the bank account, more than likely, we don't, we're not required to, we don't have to, we have several special revenue funds within the general fund, and that's what this is, it's going to be a special revenue fund. However, if you take and do a bond, if you bond for sewer, any kind of project, whether it's, any kind, doesn't matter, sewer, general fund, whatever, you bond for something, you, by law, you have to pay and keep the money in a separate account, because the auditor just likes to see the money go away, it would match you with the general ledger, well, that's the end of the year, so I will probably lean towards that, that'll be my decision, I'm going to check with our bank first of all, which we'll use Huntington on this because this is our main bank, and we're going to see what kind, what kind of deals they got to offer us, and what is some interest or whatnot, because sometimes there is some interest out there, I can do a sweep account or something, sweep the money in and out as we need it, as there comes an appropriation for the money, and get better rate of interest on money that we would do this. But there's a couple of things that I could say has got to be answered by the account and the auditor as far as, what the, what the actual numbered letters says as to, they have to verify that, and incidentally, you have your four buckets in this thing, and I'm not going to give this too deep, your four buckets in which you're going to take and apply this money to, and so what you'll do is you'll have, you see this now, the transfers in and out, you'll see if you spend two hundred thousand dollars on the sewer system, you're going to, you're going to have a transfer out of the two eighty-five account into the five ninety account, and it'll be, it'll be transferred in and out. These numbers in the uniform charter accounts are standard with everything, once they're in there, they're standard, and they all talk to each other, so they'll flow, and see where the money's coming from. But like I said, there's just a couple of things on this library that's, that's not clear, and I want to make sure it's crystal clear before I even put the money in there. Right now, the money is sound and safe within the township general fund, that's the money we take all our federal treasury or state treasury and payments in through, even for taxes, they can, they can transfer a lot of their, their taxes. For instance, we have a D and R payment pool of taxes out here, that money all comes through the general fund, because that's our number with the state, that's where it comes from, and then I make the transfer to the tax one, the appropriate number for it.
Did you have a question, because I'm not a questioner. I'm going to show later once.
No, you can't.
Again. Is that okay, guys? Show us here. How does that score with escrow account?
It's not an escrow account, it's a special revenue fund.
So, escrow is?
Escrow is a liability, this is not going to be a liability, this is an asset.
All right, so if you took portions of that money and put it in the escrow, that would be a liability?
It wouldn't be, you put it in there, it doesn't, it would be illegal to do that.
Thank you.
It's an asset of the township, but you, along with that, it's kind of funny, let's put it this way, if you want to refer to it like that, it's an asset of the township, and you're liable to make sure that it gets spent in the right whole places.
Exactly.
I think there's a, there's a, there's a community to the east over here, and I'm not going to mention the county's name, but they didn't do that. That's what the care is, but that's the same, the same scenario, and that's, that's where you're at with that, and I don't think anybody here wants to be involved in that.
No, I don't. Speaking for myself.
Yeah.
But I will provide you with this when I get this thing firm, but I want to check with Aaron Stevens one more time on this, and we talked today for about hour forty-five minutes, as I sat in the gas station, and.
Where business gets done.
And that's, that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory, but you don't think, you know, this don't, this doesn't have anything to do about you spending, you guys can spend anywhere you want, I'm just going to count for it correctly, that's all I have to say about it, I guess I could hold on to, but you know what I'm saying, it's going to, and I think, yes, to answer the question, I, I feel more comfortable, I like to, like a bond, I think the money will be in a separate account, and make the, make some more currency for it. So, that's why, take your buckets, then know exactly where it's at.
You're not going to take the bucket, you know exactly where it's at.
I've had a lot of success in negotiating with the bank to get a better return rate on new money being deposited, so I got to believe that, at this level.
I think it's the way to go, myself, and then, because you're, and you actually, if you, if you read this letter, I'll, I'll provide you with it, I'll, I'll email it to you, if you read this rather letter, it actually refers, this is what I'm sure, is this funds available, funds received, expenditures, not incurred, you have to actually have an unearned revenue number for that as well, you know, you have your cash, or one of your cash, you get that unearned revenue somewhere, so if you don't, earning, earning interest on this money, like I said, in the bank, believe it or not, state Michigan wants to know about that.
Of course they do.
That's what that, that's what.
Every penny.
That's what that means. There's dollars money.
As someone who's in the middle of a single audit right now, I think you made the right decision in splitting this into two pieces.
I've had a lot of reading, man.
It, it is painful. The right thing to do, clearly, but you've, you've chosen the right pathway.
I think so. If that answers everybody's question, I don't know, you would be concerned about that, that's not what I'm doing.
Yes, it's the word sad, but thank you.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that.
Chief operating officer over here, we'll, we'll figure the rest of it out in the next week until that is answered, and my banking lady will be back toward the end of next week, and we'll figure out what kind of deal we may work.
Okay, so, I know that, I've had a lot of feedback from all of you, and you know that this has probably not been the process that many of you have enjoyed. Some people are completely fine with what happened, some people feel like it's been rough and it's taking a long time. I don't know where you want to go from here, I don't know if you would like to go back to going page by page. After tonight, you have one more scheduled budget workshop session.
What date is that?
Huh?
What date is that?
Twenty seconds.
It's before text, kidding. Four, four to six?
Four to six. Four to six.
What day is next during that?
Thursday. I'm working with him.
Karen, were you going to read those projects that you had for us?
I can, I certainly can, that's what I was going to say.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just.
No, 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 I'm, I'm happy to, it's an unfinished list, so please know that I will continue to add, and you may find that I lost something off, I lost something off here as well. So, the first one is the capital improvement plan, James Cousins Memorial Park renovation upgrades, estimate undetermined, and I put that because when this was put together, there were no numbers, we, at that time, I was only looking at preservation of the cupola, so if there are other, other projects that people would like to see under here, and I know that the museum committee, I think, has some ideas in preparation of the one hundredth anniversary memorial, of things that could be done in the park to improve it, those could appear here, too. The other capital improvement plan project, of course, was the Park Lake Nature Trail, which was a non-motoredized facility at a cost in the plan of forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, if I'm correct, Ms. Judy, is that correct? Yeah.
So, these aren't things that you're recommending, you're just telling us these exist?
Things that have come up over the years and have been talked about being funded, and for whatever reason, either have not been funded, or it dropped off the radar, or, the next one was something that was authorized by the previous board of trustees, it was the purchase of A Bridge just east of the fire department. At the time, the board authorized it for me to have a, an appraisal and a survey done to purchase additional lands there, and then COVID hit, and I could not find anybody that would even want to come out and do the work at the time, and so I've abandoned it since then.
Could we maybe ask people?
Yes, we can. Yes, you may.
It's a east of the fire department.
Yeah, that's what you said.
West, I mean west. I'm so sorry.
I thought we were saying east of the fire department.
West. So, I'll take that. Um, at the time, it was thought we might be able to purchase, there, I guess there's about twenty-eight acres there, and I think we were looking at going up a certain portion just past where the cemetery and kind of where our property is, and we were looking at about a hundred thousand dollars as a, as a rough estimate of purchasing that land.
Was there a reason why they wanted to purchase?
Um, so, former clerk Kathy McLean, McLean was concerned that we have no additional land for cemeteries.
Oh, so that's.
It was also thought that if there were ever to be possibly a community building, like a, a big, I think at one time, former supervisor Paul Clark, he talked about a community.
Multi-purpose space.
Multi-purpose, thank you for that. It could be located there, but we, we have nowhere that we can expand cemeteries specifically, so it could be cemetery, it could be township facilities, or I guess anything else we could imagine.
So, it would go back and over, like an L?
No.
No, it would run.
It just, just runs from this road, Drumheller, up to the end of the cemetery, just a.
Kind of backwards.
No, it's a L.
So, yeah, it's an L.
Well, it would be continuous, it would just be.
Right, straight.
Straight through.
So, don't we own land on Main Street, couldn't we just expand cemetery there?
Sure.
Sorry.
Anyway, the, the big issue at La Towne was on the board was, we needed to have an option of expanding our cemetery.
Yes. It was, yep, it was one, yep, it was one thought.
You're absolutely right, we couldn't get anybody to even talk.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I called people that I had worked with previously, and they said, call us after COVID, and I don't know that we're there yet. Building and grounds.
I have a question.
Please.
Since it's already been authorized, we have to authorize it again, or can you just go ahead and do that?
You would. I, I would need a budget amendment.
We need a budget amendment.
Yeah, I would like you to revisit it, I would want to proceed if this board didn't feel it was merit and doing that.
Just a reminder, the planning commission, by statute, should review all event purchase.
Yep. So, building and grounds, the Bath Community Center, a couple of years ago, there was an idea to renovate and upgrade that facility, and there has been talk amongst some as designating that as a memorial to Clerk McQueen, to the building. At that time, though, there was a rough estimate of a hundred thousand dollars for that as well. The fire department replacement of engine sixty-four, I already mentioned, and then on here, I put Drumheller Road paving, Chandler and Webster, one eight, one point eight-two miles, full reconstruction, five hundred eighty-eight thousand one oh seven, and the next item was to be broadband, and that's where I stopped, so, and I don't think we have a good number yet for broadband, and I know there are going to be several opportunities for, for grants and other things, and for us to maybe partner with other communities and possibly get money from the county, but, so as I said, this list is by no means complete, but that's, that's what we're adapting.
So, on the, in the CIP, the nondiscretionary projects that are listed for twenty twenty-one, are all of those built into your recommended budget already?
Um, all of them except for this, I think the CIP lining, it's a cured-in-place pipe lining.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I'm not, like, super agree with this stuff, no. So, the six hundred thousand dollars that's listed for Suwer Capital Outlet, CIPP, pipelining Webster and Clark, for six hundred thousand dollars, that is not in here.
And then, is it, did everything in twenty twenty-one make it through the process from last year, or is there anything there that we should consider?
The election equipment is what is in, currently in this, proposed in this budget. I don't think we completed the pole barn, the lean-to because of the cost of materials earlier this year.
Is that the twenty thousand?
Yes. And we have worked on the pump, so I think the eighty-five thousand is accurate, although it might have come in at a lesser cost.
But in terms of projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And do you think we need to move the, or should consider moving the pole barn into 22? Or do you, well, it's probably too late to do it now.
But I would, I would want to talk to Ben about that.
Okay, that's not in?
It's not in.
So just out of curiosity, I, so we have a couple lines for public works, roads under nondiscretionary, and then I'm assuming you'll continue to have the lines under nondiscretionary for the roads projects, except for the Drumheller Road. But Drumheller is going to be a second discretionary?
Yes, it will be a deliberate decision by this group whether or not to do that. So yes. But the, but the money that you see here, the 350, it's, I put 400,000 in this year. That's just to do plus election projects that I think we discussed last time, except for the downtown area, which we have updates on that, so I'm happy to have updates. But I can share that Monday. So that's just the standard road kind of line. So Drumheller would be discretionary.
So what differentiates discretionary versus nondiscretionary road project?
So it's based on, and I think we had that list last time, that had clarity and a list of things that we do as regular maintenance, mowing and things. And then it's usually the projects, usually the worst roads in the township that we decide to undertake and repair or improve. But really, that's a, it tends to be an arbitrary number and it's based on recommendations from Clinton County Road Commission and what they have available. But it's, it's work we need, we know we need to do every year just to stay. I mean, it doesn't even keep us current, but it keeps us making progress on the condition of our roads.
Thank you.
Please.
This may be very redundant for those who've been here a long time. What's the definition of a CIP, capital improvement plan?
Anything, anything like over $20,000, project over $20,000 that would be above and beyond basically anything that's other than regular operations or.
So anything over 20,000 is considered capital improvement?
Yes, it's also listed in here. There's some other capital improvements.
Yeah, I saw that.
There is a little bit of a definition.
You don't think that the ARPA is too close? But you have a lot of budgeted things that are over 20,000, but that don't necessarily mean it's called by the CIP.
Well, that's why, that's why I guess I was, so what's the definition?
I kind of read what you were saying.
Thank you, I knew you would. So that's what I guess I'm trying to ask is, the definition of a CIP isn't necessarily over 20,000?
No, but it's usually like listed here. Routine maintenance and repairs are not CIPs.
So what is, what is the definition of CIP?
Something new?
Do it.
Okay.
So that's appreciated.
Capital improvement projects are currently defined as permanent physical or system improvements that cost at least $20,000 or significant equipment purchases in excess of $20,000 and add value to the township.
Who made that definition? Is that something?
I believe that is taken from.
The planning and enabling.
Yeah, from the Planning and Enabling Act, which requires us to do capital improvement planning.
But it doesn't mean that simply if it's over 20,000, it's a CIP?
No.
Okay. So it has to be something the township owns, or the township improves the township?
Yes, like paving of Drumheller or the Park Lake Trail or.
So how does a vehicle become a CIP?
Asset of township.
Thank you.
Yep. Like a different improvement if there were to be a frontman put in the, the, or.
So how does a vehicle have to be?
That'd be what?
A CIP?
CIP is the plan.
A capital improve, no, I understand that, but I'm just trying to, in my own head, because vehicle doesn't make.
Vehicle's an asset.
Yes, it is.
But you wear it, it's got depreciation. Well, yes and no.
No, no, yes, no.
So the person is an asset, if the vehicle's an asset. And I'm just trying to, in my own head, trying to figure out.
What person?
Well, any person.
We don't own people. I mean.
Okay, it's something I need to just keep for because you're.
Well, it's routine, routine, but it's like routine replacements. Or like a lot of what we do, okay, so here's a good example, I think, and hopefully I'm accurate. If I was going to line the road under Webster Road from here, Clark Road, that would be maintenance. If I were going to install new sewer infrastructure to a new part of the township.
Improvement.
That would be a capital improvement.
Right, I get that.
Okay.
I get that part. The vehicle part is.
Capital assets, the way that we're discussing CIP and capital assets is depreciable, depreciable. Style, it could be depreciable equipment, it could be depreciable buildings, it could be depreciable infrastructure. Anything that depreciates is a capital asset. And it has to be, and that's accounted for in your audit. If you look on page like 50 something, 56, so it accounts for that and tells about what your network of your township is because I put it up and depreciated out.
In addition to that, though. Yes, I was gonna say, I have to come to you, and just because Dave wants a new fire truck doesn't mean he can sell the old fire truck. I have to come to you as a board and say.
Sure.
We'd like to put this up for sale or bid or, I have to get permission from the board to.
Be the police governor.
To dispose of that asset.
And so that, because of that, you call it a CIP? Okay.
She has to meet with the auditors every year, sort of the end of the audit. She has to tell every asset that the township has acquired that year and every asset that the township has sold that year. They'll cut them off and sometimes they'll even go and look at them.
Yep.
Back years ago, they had.
Is that everything? So everything has to be tagged?
That's tagged. That's what we talked about.
Yes, we did.
Things, and that's how they come up with that.
But you're tagged. This is not tagged.
Changed that with GAD 34, anything was built after 2007. That was before that, 2005 or so.
Every lift station.
Everything had to be tagged. Every asset that was, and we set our, we set our asset at $5,000 and that's, that's what we set it. You had your choice of what number of value you want to put on your assets to accomplish.
This is $100, they don't, they don't tag this. It's insignificant to them.
I just, I do want to support Gray in this, and that's, we haven't always done a great job of being exact in this. And so I think things like the purchase of property across on Park Lake, I don't think that ever went through the capital improvement plan process. The house.
No, the board decided.
So which was a capital asset that was acquired by the township. So there are things that we can do to improve.
Yes.
What is included and not included.
Happen outside of it, yes.
And then there's things that we can do to improve the process by which things are evaluated. And so I, that's been an ongoing issue with the planning commission being frustrated with not having a clear process. They've been working on it for several years.
I do think it has improved. I know it's frustrating to a lot of people, but I do think it has improved.
Yeah.
Mr. Bency?
I think that's an excellent example. Sometimes when you sit on the township board, things come to you as an opportunity. And that property was just an opportunity that just came to the township board. And you have to make a decision. You haven't got time to run it through some kind of special mail, if you will. You have to make a decision to go ahead and, we're gonna extend this public asset. And so it's not gonna ever be perfect because you're faced with those decisions sometimes and you just have to go ahead. And in that particular decision, we got a really good price. So you sometimes don't have the luxury of running it through the mill, so to speak. You just, you just don't. On occasion, you just have to make a decision. So that's a good example.
For that example, I'd have to check with the auditors to make sure because they'd be the ones that would tell me this.
I think we have to.
Because it could be categorized, real estate can be categorized differently than what the rest of this stuff is. Because real estate is appraised as a value.
And I think it was put under capital outlay.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'd have to look at that, why? Because I gotta believe they would, they would tell us if we were doing something wrong. But I'm not saying that Dave's saying right, but I think that real estate, when you purchase real estate, that falls under the market.
Well, ultimately, this is just a plan for us to use to build budgets and to think about the future. As Joe said, things are going to come about as either opportunities or, you know, if a tornado came through here and we had to replace the roof or a building or something like that, it wouldn't have been in the plan, but it would be something that we would do. So this is just a tool.
The building, all that stuff is a good point, because buildings can go, go away from place and whatnot. Real estate has got a tax ID number and it belongs to these two people sitting in the audience or the township or any one of us sitting on this board. It has a value because of the tax ID number and the property, property value. I'd have to check with the auditor on that, I don't know. But if that's not being categorized, that particular instance, something like, I don't know if I heard it wrong. Good question.
I think we should check it out. We should know in the future.
How many, how many, how many play pieces of our property does the township own, 64?
51.
51?
Well, I thought it was 59, so we do.
So, well, I, I've heard 53, I've heard 54, and three times I've heard 51, so I chose 51.
That's a good one, too.
That's my process.
And I'm gonna tell you right up front, we don't pay taxes on land that the township owns. We don't even penalizing our taxpayers if we're taxing them on land that they already own. The township owns, so that, that piece of it right there, that is why I asked it, it's an harder question because that piece right there is, and you're gonna deal with that in the near future again here with some more stuff that we're gonna talk about in the budget. But you've got, you have your DDA land that the township technically owns and we're paying a tax bill on because there wasn't technically part of the township for it, now it is. So we're gonna have to decide, I don't think you want to pay taxes on that. You can figure out what you're doing with that. But that's a good question, Dave's might ask the auditor about that.
I understand a possibility, I think just having a plan that is clear as to, you know, what, what is included, what's not included, what are exemptions? And then the other thing that I want to remind us all is that when the capital improvement planning process is a tool of a comprehensive plan and it's an instrument to ensure that we're working towards the goals that the community has agreed upon. And so I just ask that when we think about this, the various projects, we try to be intentional about making it to what our longer-term goals are for the community.
Certainly. I think that's, that was an excellent point. Please.
So I want to move us away from the definition of a capital improvement, but I want to make sure everyone's okay with moving on. So the $600,000 that you did not include in fiscal year '22 for the CIPP pipelining.
Yes.
Did you not include that because it was too big a cost, or was there some changes?
So, so in looking at the sewer master plan, I think we know that our community has changed and it's, it's still, I mean, in the last couple of weeks, we've had five development projects come through that will significantly impact us in our sewer system. So I really need a better handle on the condition and what needs to be addressed as part of that system. There hasn't been a plan, a new plan since 2009. I do not have a good idea of, if I were to put that $600,000 in, invest it in that system and then I found out that Chandler Road needed it worse, I may have missed out. So it's, to me, it's a significant amount of money that I couldn't take a gamble with.
So it could be a different piece of the puzzle, it could be more, it could be less, so you've put it, okay, thanks.
But until I have that new master plan and the estimate of where it's at, I can't.
Yeah, that makes a ton of sense, thanks.
What word do you master plan?
We have authorized it, yep. It's in progress.
Will that include five new developments that you're talking about?
No, those have come in the last couple of weeks. They, the developers have approached us and, and there are some things, I think, that will be moving forward to the planning commission.
So do we get a list of that, or is that something?
Until they, until there's, until they submit, they've had like a pre-application meeting with Bert Gale, the planner, the assessor, and myself. But until they submit an application, they are not, in a sense, real to us.
Nope, thank you.
Because that kicks off the administrative review and then the agency review and then the planning commission gets to see it. So when they submit applications, I will sure let you know. Because it's exciting to me that these have come almost out of nowhere, so.
Interesting.
It's a good excitement.
It is, it is. Go ahead, please.
For the EQ basin, the 1.5 million in 2023, do you feel the same way about that? That that, we wouldn't know if that's what we want to do till after the master plan?
Yes, because I think that that is going to be critical. Everything that comes from south of Webster comes through this area. And the EQ basin is how we would hold and release to do it. So we can have more development if we have that EQ basin to store and release.
Okay.
So it would be, that would be huge for us. But I, yes, I would like to wait for the plan.
Is there anything on the list here that's put off into further years that you think we should consider moving forward due to the ARPA funds or the fund balance that we might be able to pull off sooner rather than later? Knowing that costs for things go up over time?
Sure.
And if you need to think about that and tell us at a different time, I don't want to put you on the spot. You don't need to figure that out now.
Well, and some of it, some of it is based on other people, too.
Yeah.
Like I told you today, if we can't, I mean, he's considering, I talked to him about the considering changing, you know, a vehicle. Like, does that mean we start to change the whole fleet? Does that mean it's just that vehicle? You know, we've had three accidents with vehicles in the last little while. I mean, that may change the replacement schedule for things. I don't know. So some of it is based on other people and their knowledge, too.
A lot of what we're gonna face is supply chain.
That's correct.
He was talking earlier this evening, he'd like to buy another Chevy. If it was available, if he can get a chip for it, if they can make it for him. Cars are about eight months old right now. You want to buy a new one, and there's no guarantee you'll get it in eight months. So some of the things that are going to be budgeted for are going to be hard to acquire within the, within the time of this, but it's just that simple. We need to understand that going in, rather than giving very clinical six months from now saying, well, we couldn't get a car. We need to know that that's a real possibility. It's also a $38,000 investment. So we just need to understand that some things are not going to be available.
I think we have to, I agree, I think that means, do we use ARPA funds for those things? Because we have to spend those things, that money quicker? Or do we use fund balance when that comes around? That's what I'm trying to mull about in my head is when and where these expenses come in, knowing that it's going to be affected by things like that.
Well, the cars are budgeted for, so that would come out of your, out of your, out of your regular budget. I think you're gonna want to address this issue of rising costs. Some of these projects you're gonna want to do because they're gonna be cheaper to do them this year and get them done than they are next year. A minimum cost increase right now on a used car, used cars are up 24%, new cars are up 9%. And that's gonna be running pretty much across the board. So you should probably budget for a minimum of 15% cost overrun, and that might be low.
For your scenario, if it doesn't happen, because some are predicting that this chain is going to be this. For your scenario, if it doesn't happen, because some are predicting that this chain is going to be, this supply problem's gonna be with us for a year. So if you figure fifteen percent more, but it doesn't take place, that then goes back into the general fund?
Well, yes, it would, certainly. And, and, you know, there's gonna be winners and there's gonna be losers.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, and so it's just, it's just a general number. In, in this capital improvement expenditures, I mean, I'm only one over here, but I would like to see a cushion so that when things come in and they cost more, the money's already there, that fifteen percent is above, is already there, so if they can, go ahead and do this. Otherwise, you're gonna run into a situation where, and I'm gonna quote Treasury Wishmaster here, these numbers are soft. They, they're flexible, they move.
When you say that, do you mean like my column for two thousand and twenty-two, add fifteen percent to that? Like, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to if I was gonna spend a million dollars, I would budget a million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for cost overrun. One hundred and fifty, I would not have earmarked for anything other than, I'm gonna have some increase in costs here. It's, it's just a budgeting thing that I do. Okay. And it's just something I'm gonna put out in front of the board, that it'd be nice to have a cushion in front of some of these projects if they come in over budget.
Yeah, we've seen that happen already, you know, bathrooms at Wisfoster Park or at Cousins Park, things like that that ultimately came in more expensive and was not approved, it didn't happen.
If you approve a group of projects and then you have a fifteen percent cost overrun over here already, then there's some room there for the management. Okay. I'm just, it's just, just put it out there. Your overall concern, Ryan, is, is very real, because we could have a thirty percent increase in cost in just the next forty-four months, why we said it.
I, I think for me, and it, and it comes down to the board agreeing with, with it, there are some really great things happening in this community right now with the consideration of improving broadband, the safe routes to school, that can be aligned with some other projects that are happening near the same time. Sewer infrastructure. I'm a big believer in taking care of what we have now. I would love to not have sewer emergencies and cavins and spills and blockages, but I, I'm not always gonna be able to prevent those things. But I think for some time, infrastructure, parking lots and different things have been ignored and it, and it results in, for me, that's what results in additional cost on the road, is if you just keep ignoring something, knowing it's not, you know, if you know the sewer's leaking on, on Webster Road, it's, it's not, but if you knew that and you just keep kicking the can down the road, it just increases the cost of fixing it. So I, I'm, I'm more in favor of looking at those things that we can address, but I don't have that information, all of that information yet. I think broadband's getting there, I think safe routes to school is getting there, but those, those are the types of investments that I think create excitement in the community and make us a better community. So those are, those are the types of things I'll be looking at in addition to the things that we're required to do statutorily. How do we make collecting taxes better if we can? How do we, you know, make elections better if we can? Police and fire, how do we make those, those services better? So not everything we do is statutory, so, but, but that's where I spend the majority of my time trying to focus on. And, and where does that, you know, does, does the development coming in line up with the master plan of areas that we wanna develop? You know, if we wanted to further develop Chandler Road, we need some improvements in sewer. So, you know, it's just those type, those types of larger scale things. So where would you like to go from here?
Home. I'm going to dinner.
Other comments?
I'm still waiting to hear if there's any comments about where we're supposed to go, I think Karen was doing the same thing.
Can I ask a couple of questions about one?
You're not allowed.
I'd like to know why we got to be too set here, I'd like to know more about your nature trail business and how you go for forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
That was.
Can you, I'm, I hate to do this, can you, use the microphone?
Yes.
Because it catches it for the video, thank you.
That was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, please, jump right in, that was the Parks and Rec Commission that came up with that. Ms. Hord, I believe, was the final person that had estimates by various construction companies and the like. It was.
How many years ago?
It was technically last year, well, no, 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 because we'll just forget COVID year, it was technically two thousand and nineteen when, when she came up with those numbers. And I think that, you know, when push came to shove, in this particular phase, this was for the parking lot and the like, so that, we used to have a parking lot there, but unfortunately, it's, it's got cottonwood trees in it now, about that big around, all over it. I mean, there, it looks like somebody planted them in there, but, so that would need to be taken care of. But, you know, back when we was, were tasked with creating an ad hoc committee to break up the various phases suggested for the Park Lake Preserve and Nature Trail, it was determined that the first thing we'd start out with was the, the trailhead, the parking area, and the, the trail that's already there getting down to the water control structure. So that's where the forty-one thousand came from. And again, that's a eye in the sky, you know, pulling it out with a couple, three estimates from some construction people. And there are, you know, a myriad of different ways to go with that, whether it be just mowing the trail or if it's wood chips or if it's crushed asphalt or limestone or concrete.
If you can, and I'm not gonna hold either one of you to this, but I've heard a lot of ideas in terms of, I think you've been, I'm gonna get it wrong, what's the, the structure she talked about, like an observatory or a?
Oh, 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 an outdoor teaching pavilion.
Yes, thank you. What does phase two look like to you?
Phase two would be connecting, connecting the two ends, basically. You know, you can break that up into five, ten, you know, it just depends on how much money you have. But I would, yes, Joe.
This forty-one thousand that's proposed, these are, these are all soft numbers.
Yes.
Okay. That does not include the purchase of the one piece of property that's available?
No, it does not, and I would, would like to speak about that.
This is an ideal example of
Carpe diem.
That can go to the planning commission like Jason's been talking about, so that they can take a look at the purchase of that property, because it's the last piece of the blue box.
It is, it is, and I guess.
It, it should go to the planning commission, so that they get to review it.
And that's kind of, we've already kind of put that in place, Karen's already, already spearheaded that, so, you know, given that her plate is rather full right now. But yes, that is a carpe diem situation that you spoke about earlier in regards to the Gupta House, this, this property, I'll just, this is kind of a segue, so I'll explain it right now. There's, there's a five acre parcel literally right behind where Joe lives, that is sandwiched in between where Joe lives and Oak Island. And it would be an ideal spot on, on the Park Lake, the west, excuse me, the east side of this proposed Preserve and Nature, Nature Trail to put a parking area, possibly a pavilion, you know, a picnic area, whatever you want, but it's, it's basically a landlocked parcel that would be ideal to, to.
But it's not part of this proposal.
It is not, that has nothing, that, that wasn't even known to be available at this time, so, yes.
No, my question deals with the other end, so it would be on the north side, we already have a section that we own.
Correct.
So this would be money that, new money that would have to be expended in order to buy almost the identical, they're, they're near each other.
They, it would, they would enhance one another, yeah, it would basically double that area back there.
This is the south side?
Yeah.
This is the south side, yes, and it's, and it's higher land out of the, the water table area.
That's what I wondered.
It's much higher.
Because DNR supposedly.
And that I haven't tracked down yet.
Yep, and that's the one thing that needs to be asked, because they, supposedly DNR stated initially, that you couldn't put a parking lot there because it's too low, but there's a lot of
Right.
Well, you can't, and you can't because it's part of the DNR, it's part of the money we received to purchase the land.
That's what the.
It's a stipulation.
I can't find that in writing anywhere.
I have it.
Okay.
I have it.
I mean, I, I.
I have that.
Okay, good.
You cannot use money from the DNR for active recreation and then create a parking lot.
Ah, that's what it is, it's, so it's a.
It has to be a beach, it has to be a park, it has to be a.
There you go.
It has to be a something.
That was.
It can't just be.
They accepted that in order to expand.
A trail.
A trail.
Yes, and, and, and that's why we quote, "need" this parcel behind, behind.
Because it's not really directly behind.
Well, it's, that's.
It's according to the maps.
Yeah.
It's not.
I don't know what else to call it.
It's not necessary to get to Park Lake Road to have that piece of land.
Excuse me?
It's not necessary to get the trail back to Park Lake Road.
No.
To have that piece of land.
We already have that, however.
The township owns all the land.
Correct. This parcel is literally adjacent to the present parcel that the township owns by virtue of a DNR grant. And so it would allow us to own the property, this new parcel, so that we could have a parking area and a, and a pavilion or a gathering area at that area, at that.
Okay, so what you're saying, these two touch each other.
Yep.
They're contiguous to each other. So you have two entrances from Park Lake.
No.
You have one.
One.
You actually have two, because we bought, we have, the township has one, we don't have the other at this stage. So we do own the, the one.
The one.
So what we're looking, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're looking to purchase the other part, so they're contiguous to each other, so you will have this kind of a bench. See, I don't think, that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out, because that's not where it's at, but anyway.
I guess I don't understand the question you're asking. Can I answer the question? Yes. So I wanna go back to Steve's original question about what, what is the forty-one thousand for? So having. Okay. I feel that you underspecified the work that went into that plan. So I'm, having been a part of the planning commission who reviewed that plan and who put my votes to it, I do wanna say that among the capital improvement plans that I've seen or the requests that have come through, this was one of the most complete requests that have come through. And I'll just specify what those expenditures are, and are they soft? Sure, do money, does, do costs increase? Sure. But ultimately, what they're asking for is to redo the, an existing parking lot, to add gravel, remove shrubs, whatever's on it, add a fence along the roadway to separate the walking, the pathway to the control, control structure to the actual trail. Correct. And then to add signage, right, those are the main elements. No, the, no, the forty-one thousand is.
But it also includes maintenance, mowing, and a bathroom, a porta potty down there for nine months, because people have to have the ability to use bathroom. So it includes nine months of porta potty plus nine months of mowing to take the burden off the township.
Thank you.
Ideally, and I can't remember, and I'm asking because I, I, I've known, I've been part of, like, near this project for like ten years now.
Yes.
It's ongoing and it's more than changed. How, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna break it down to phases, but if there was like, how many phases would there be to, to, to complete this to? All the way around?
That would just deter, maybe directly determine on how much input in cash which we could have.
I, I guess, I guess, like.
Right now, we have phase one.
Right.
It takes it from Webster Road, the staging area for the building of the, back in the dam, the water trailhead, I mean, the trailhead at Webster Road. This particular forty-eight thousand dollars is what it was, because it includes the five thousand dollars from Park Lake. It takes it to the entrance to Oak Island, that's phase one. Phase two, and the township owns all of the land to take it from Oak Island out to Park Lake Road.
Okay.
That would be phase two, and the reason for that phase two is it, we have not determined if we need boardwalk and if we do need boardwalk, how much boardwalk we need. And the DNR has money through the trust fund, once we, once we say, yes, we're going to have a nature trail, yes, we're gonna put forty-five thousand dollars into the nature trail of township money, yes, we have the, we have the, the land that goes all the way around, the township owns that, then we comply for a grant from the DNR, the trust fund, which will let us build the, the, the boardwalk. So at this point, it's two phases, one, yes, we want a nature trail, put your name behind it, put some money into it, so we can do phase two, go to the trust fund and get the grant that we need for the boardwalk.
So it just, phase one in and of itself is worthy of being funded because of the assets that it provides our community in terms of, it's a nature trail, if you're signed it, you have school tours there, you could have Cub Scouts, you can do all sorts of things there, it's a place that would be friendly and inviting for our community members to go walk and enjoy nature, right? Correct. And that, that would open the nature trail like that, I mean, it could become, it wouldn't go all the way out, you know, be a continuous trail all the way out to Park Lake Road, however, it would become a bona fide nature trail. And I guess, you know, you guys are, I would like to hope you're not getting tired of me and Judy coming here all the time, but what I'd like to hear from you is just an official condoning of, you know, the trail, the nature trail and preserve, to just, to let you know we're all on the same path, that we wanna, we want to enhance the community and, and make these investments in our future.
So, I'm sorry, Ryan.
No, go ahead.
Part of the reason I ask the questions is because I'm, I'm trying to think of it in terms of kind of like this, you know, where there's a twenty-two phase and twenty-three and twenty-four.
Oh, heavens, yes.
And just think of it in terms of, if we do this, then next will be this and next will be this. It's not to, it's not to.
And I can put that all in writing?
And, and to discourage it, it's just to try to be realistic.
Oh, no, no, no.
Just say, what are the, what comes next?
You, you have to have it here, I know, you're the, you're the.
I try to think that way.
The main planner, you don't ever.
I guess the fit was other things.
Sure, don't ever hesitate to ask, ask the question.
Our investment as a township in this land brings us the possibility of working with the Board of Water and Light. They did, they own the water main, that brings the, all the water to Bath, comes down exactly where the nature trail is, the nature trail protects that, the, we, we could go to them, the Board of Water and Light, for a grant, that we could build a pavilion or a, a deck out so people could get out into the middle of the lake and see the lake, but we can also work with Christmas Company, they did all of the construction at Bath School District, and we could ask them for a grant to build an outdoor classroom over there so we could really have the children take advantage of the time that they have out there. So your investment, just this little forty-five thousand dollars, starts the ball rolling and really allows us to build on what is there and what the community should really be enjoying.
And I didn't know that about Board of Water and Light, so thank you.
Yeah, the trail, literally, the berm, the water control structure, the land dike, if you will, and.
What I think is interesting historically, when our first residents, the Native Americans, lived in this area and they were going to tribal council meetings in Oakamas, that is exactly how they went. This is the path that the Native Americans used to transit from Bath to Oakamas, so they could go to their tribal council meeting. So it's another way for us to really appreciate and celebrate our history.
And that, in fact, is on Wikipedia, if you wanna read about it, the Park Lake Trail. It came through Tower Gardens, anyway, so.
I think Ryan was the question.
Yes.
You just quoted Wikipedia to an academic, that's not gonna, that's not gonna fly.
Well, that's just on paper.
Have, have you, Karen, or any of the staff, or anybody involved in the project, thought about what Karen was mentioning earlier, the, the long-term requirements for upkeep, how that affects the budget once these things are in place? Has that been built in anywhere or estimated anywhere?
It has not to this point, but in the long term, another thing that I gave you people, the, the Board of Trustees and Karen, is the proposal for a Parks and Green Space Commission. That, in and of itself, that entity would take care of everything, would be responsible for everything. It would relieve the DPW of daily, weekly, monthly maintenance on the trail and of purchases and divestitures, if that's what was required.
And that's through a parks millage?
Correct, possibly, or you could do bonds, you could do sinking funds, whatever, just depends on where you decide to go to fund that. And that was one of the reasons that I brought that about, was because have, just like you said, have I ever thought about what the maintenance, you know, on a yearly basis is down the road? I did, and I said, well, God, it seems like if they had their own. I did, and I said, well, God, it seems like if they had their own millage, per se, or, you know, for lack of a better term, a fractional millage, to, to fund that, to fund, uh, the, you know, the-
Green space.
Well, the green space, it, it's just a, it's just a big spatial thing that I thought about, was the disseminating of the fifty-one parcels. You know, it's, uh, it's possible that this commission could even do that. And I'm getting off on a, on a tangent with that answer, but, um, let me just, uh, did I answer your question, or did I just make it more muddy?
I think, just to be honest with you-
Yes.
I think when you, when you say what you just said-
Uh-huh.
-about millages, we're looking at police and fire needs more money.
Oh, I've already thought about all of that, yes.
We're gonna bond potentially some big money for some sanitary sewer increase. I just, I get, I get frightened when I hear what you say.
That's-
Because when you start it, I feel like you open the can. Um, I'm not saying I don't think it's good, I, I think it would be really cool.
Well, yeah, you know-
I worry about the money, the funding, the long-term funding of it. And, and that's what this group is here for too, but, um, I just think about all the other things-
Certainly.
-we have to accomplish, and that, that's what, that's honestly what puts me off, because that's what scares me.
Yeah.
And, and hearing the interest that we could have from Board of Water and Light and Christmas Company helps me alleviate some of that. Um, but, but that's where my head goes.
And, and again, I, you know, I, I'm not talking about a fun, I, I am talking about a funding source with a, with a Parks and Open Space Commission, but not necessarily to, to get more taxes, or to, to increase taxes. You know, that entity would be responsible for garnering, um, interest in, and securing grants and government money, or, you know, private entity money, like Board of Water and Light, Consumers Energy. So, um, did I answer the questions about the CIP forty-one thousand dollars? That was how this all started. Uh, Jason?
Yes.
Anybody else have questions for Ryan?
Is there any engineering drawings for this project?
There is, many, movies, video.
There's, there's engineering drawings.
Well, there, there's the, is there anything in addition to the, the Spicer drawings?
In addition? I don't think you could get any more, excuse me?
Drawing for the trail.
Yes.
Spicer, i- is that what you're referring to?
The, I, I have the original Spicer, Spicer, uh, presentation. You all have that, yeah. Um, and I also have a virtual plethora of proposed, uh, visuals, you know, if you will, renderings.
And maybe that's why this scares me, is because the initial estimate from Spicer was-
Well, and, and this is the, another-
Two million dollars.
You know, it-
I was gonna say, forty-one thousand dollars wasn't paid for the engineering drawings.
But it was a lot of the, the boardwalk, and if you apply for the Parks and Rec stuff at the state, you had to make ADA compliant, which makes it wheelchair accessible, which makes it wider, which makes it more expensive.
That's the TAP grant, that's the MDOT grant.
Right.
That requires that.
But it's the other trouble, if somebody gets hurt when it's on the front.
Okay, one thing I wanna-
But it, it ended up getting the price to two million dollars, and the board would sort of went, boo.
The two million dollars, the two million dollars of that, that project was literally for the elevated boardwalk over the wa, over the wetlands. That, two million dollars of that was, was proposed for that. And that's what I want to do with, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, I think, I think what would be helpful through the board is, back to Chairman Wishwatch's original question, um, can you make us up a list of what we're gonna get for this forty-one thousand dollars?
We, we have the application from the-
The CIP explains that.
The, the original submission.
These numbers are really soft.
Well, those numbers were updated last year when, when we turned that back in again.
I have the packet.
You have it?
This is one of the weaknesses that I think Jason is identifying in the process. They're always gonna be soft numbers, because they're coming from our commissions who don't really have the authority to go out and start bidding stuff out for us. It, it's, it's this weirdness between the two.
What we'd like you to do, Joe, is to add the fifteen percent to that, though.
Well, that would be fun, and the wall numbers are soft, according to the conversation we had tonight.
Okay, one, one of the things I'd like to speak about is, is the, the two million dollar elevated boardwalk to go over the wetlands. I've been in conversation with, as an individual, I've been in, in a conversation with Oak Island and their owners, Sun Communities, about the possibility of merely moving the, if, and if you looked at the, at the, at the contours of the land, the land literally, where that trail goes straight east to west to Park Lake Road from, uh, the end of, of Webster Road. That land literally goes up ten to fifteen feet in a, in a length of this building. And so if you move that trail, if you got an easement to move that trail twenty-five feet south onto Oak Island property, you'd save two million dollars, just like that.
So, I, here's the thing, I mean, we've had more people who have come to the planning commission and to this board advocating for this project than all the other projects combined.
Yes.
And so I don't understand why we're trying to look for all the weaknesses of a forty-one thousand dollar project, as opposed to saying, that, hey, our community has shown some interest in this. Maybe we should actually, like, try to work with the people who have done all the friggin' work, to say, hey, let's, let's, let's start.
What I see, I don't see a negativity or, or, uh, you know, a downplaying of that forty-one thousand dollar CIP. What I see is a, for lack of a better term, just a, a closed eye toward the project in itself. All I, all, me personally, all I would like to see from you people are, yeah, you know, I agree, that's a really great concept, we need that, we just don't know when we're gonna be able to get it to completion, but let's get started on it. You know, let's say, let's, let's put, you know, like they do with a new church, let's put a sign out at Park Lake Road saying, "Future site of proposed Park Lake Preserve." Let's get some, get some, some notice going, you know?
Right, I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll correct you. It's, it's a blind eye to what the citizens want, not to the project.
Say that again?
It's a blind eye to what the people of our township want. This is not a new criticism of this.
Oh, okay.
I just will, if you don't mind, Jason, I will just, uh, support you in that, because we went through all the requirements and all the hoops that the township has asked us to, including having public meetings and public hearings, and getting input from the public. I don't think that any proposed project for this community has gone through so much, um, evaluation, or summation, or effort as this one has. And if you look at the non-motorized plan, if you look at the Parks and Rec plan, if you look at the Park Lake Advisory Board plan, they all propose and support this project. And it's the voice of the people that we're asking you to support at this point. Thank you.
And, the, I forget what I was gonna say when I heard. The, 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 the CIP will say forty-two thousand dollars, forty-five thousand dollars, and then the proposed purchase of this, this carpe diem purchase, I'll call it, of the five acre parcel behind Joe Benzies, for lack of a better, better term. Um, this, this is roughly eighty-five thousand dollars, which, which, for DNR trust fund purposes, we only have to match twenty percent, excuse me, twenty-five percent. And so that becomes over three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that proposed, you know, sky in the high, two million dollar, uh, project, which really cuts a lot out of that, once you add that trust fund grant. There are, I think, three other possibilities for grants in addition to this. There, there are, uh, in fact, some water-related grants from the DNR, water trails, water access, that I think could be construed in with this, in that it travels a great deal right along the waterway. And there is one waterway that goes right back to the water control structure, that used to be navigable, needs to be cleaned out now, but, uh, there are, I've, I've researched this, I probably work on this project in my head and on paper, as much as all of you do on this budget. Call me pathetic, I do that. But anyway, um, I, again, that's, that's what I wanted to, wanted to stress, I'm segueing this into my, uh, public speaking. But, uh, one other thing, I'm changing the subject entirely. Has anybody, did anybody have any other questions on the Park Lake Nature Preserve and Trail?
That's okay.
Good, okay, so, my, uh, can I, can I do my public?
Hang on one second.
Comments?
One sec.
Just one, hang on for your public comments.
Yeah, I'm holding.
Is there anything else?
Look, I was gonna say I can go-
Do you have any other questions?
So we're not doing anything else until the twenty-second, no other changes, nothing going?
That's what they're saying.
Who's they? Okay.
Yeah, you want, just for another meeting or something?
No, I'm just trying to figure out it, what the, what the plan is here. If we're not gonna do any changing to it, I think then Karen makes her updates and we get to see one more version of this. But if we're gonna keep changing it, she's not gonna do that.
That's correct. I mean, I, well, there's a-
I'm gonna do an update from what we've talked about, because you were gonna put another, you're gonna take pages out, put pages in.
There has been no discussion here, and I think I said this last week-
Okay.
-when we had, there has been no discussion here as to put more money in roads, do this, do that. All, all we have are the changes that, like, basically Steve and I have identified that need to be changed to make it correct and, and crucial.
Oh, my understanding was that we're gonna take a page out, and we just remember what page was.
It's police and fire.
We're gonna take the page out and, and kind of update what we were looking at, but if we don't have any updates, then-
Well, we have some updates, but I don't, I don't have, really, I don't have feedback from all of you. If, if silence is feedback-
What feed, you mean, feedback as to what you want to do with-
You, you were thinking it last time, like, you wanted to put more money in roads.
Yeah, and I said, yeah, and, oh, okay.
But we never, we never, this group didn't have a discussion and say, we want to add ten thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand. There's, there's been no talk of changing, adding, cutting.
Oh, well, my understanding, maybe, maybe it's my understanding.
Like it is, I don't think you, I don't-
Hang on one second, Joe. Was that, we were going, two seconds, right? That one second prayer, one second prayer, and then you also, one minute before it's done. Uh, my understanding was that these were suggestions that you were making.
This is the budget I'm proposing.
Right, that you're, you're suggesting, you're proposing that these are the numbers, and that we're to listen to what your proposal was, and then-
You, you-
No.
I told you that time.
And I missed our page one, because I, I-
I told you, I told you that.
She told us that.
I've been telling you.
No, she told us that if we wanted to make changes, we should say it.
Like, when we talked about increasing the committee pay, like, that, I want to hear those things from you, and I'm not hearing that from any of you.
I got, so now, this is not just your suggestion.
You're just sitting, you're, you all are just nodding your heads at me, and I don't know whether you like it, don't like it, wanna cut it, wanna add to it, or I don't know what you want at this time.
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood, because my, my understanding was, these were your suggestions, and then at one time, we were gonna sit with or without you, I don't know, and decide-
Probably with me.
How are we gonna decide, I'm thinking, so if I, if I put a suggestion out, then that suggestion is supposed to be an okay suggestion?
It's gotta be supported by more than just you.
If you say, if you say, like you did last time, to cut Taylor's salary by ten thousand dollars and put it in roads, you're the only one I heard that from. I didn't hear-
I'm getting it.
I didn't hear four people say, yeah, that's a great idea, let's do it.
Okay, all right.
Now, can I say something?
No, your second is here. You're right.
Ryan's correct, we need another meeting besides the twenty-second to finish this.
Well, no question.
So on Monday's agenda, I have, um, both, like, additional, what's, what's, what's the strategy going forward again? There's one meeting, there's one more meeting scheduled, and setting a public hearing, if we're prepared to do that. You have to do that by December fifteenth. You have to hold a public hearing by December fifteenth.
That's correct, by law.
You have to adopt the budget by December thirty-first.
Well, no.
Yes.
No, you did it November before, which was a good move.
I said by.
But, that's correct.
By.
By December thirty-first. No, that's-
Okay. So you said no, and I was like, no, you have to.
Oh, no, you have to.
On budget, you have to.
What I'm saying is, you can adopt it while you're in November, so that's, okay.
So what I'm not hearing, and, and that's why I said, your, your silence, it can be taken, you, you don't like it, you like it, you're, you're all not having, uh-
Then, then would it be better if I put it writing?
No.
What I want, okay, and then that can re-
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna put it writing and share, if you're forward, I thought you just meant put it, no, you, you have to do that work here.
Because I under, my understanding was, you were making suggestions, and we're taking the suggestions in.
It's not a suggestion, it's her recommended budget.
Recommended budget.
Well, recommended suggestion, we're playing semantics.
It was unclear to me whether we were simply reviewing a, a, a first round review, and then there'd be a second round set of discussions and consensus going. So I think that's what Marie is-
Well, you confused, that's okay, yes, that's, that's all right, I'll take that.
So I have not been, I mean, I, it's not been clear to me whether or not we were making formal decisions about each-
I didn't think we were.
Element of the budget. Which, you know, I spoke in my piece, as you all know, where, where I felt strongly, and so, but it wasn't clear to me if there was, I was just flat out being ignored, and that was gonna be the, the way we're gonna go, or if there was gonna be an opportunity to actually have a more formal discussion and, and, and decision.
You, you could, you certainly, I could go through my recommendation. What I was trying to do was go through the recommendation, so that you were aware of what was in it, and how it was different from the previous year, either why it was more or less, or whatever. And then you could say, like, we don't want two police officers, we only want, or we don't want two full-time people at the front. I was trying to just give you the, and, and we could have, we, we could and still can do that as we go through. It's easier for me if we do it as we go through, but we don't necessarily have to. You, somebody could say, I wanna go back to township board and I want to increase committee pay. We already did that one, but they could say, I want to increase committee pay. Or I wanna go with Parks and Rec, I wanna do this. But what I need to hear, and that's the discussion we had, um, after last time, when you exited, um, was that, what I need to hear is not just see silence, I need to hear more than just Marie or you say, this is what I want. I need to have other people say, no, I don't want that, or yes, I also want that.
And typically, the walkthrough takes like one meeting, maybe two meetings, and then these other meetings that we would have had scheduled, we would be getting into some of this more back and forth, but that's why I'm asking, we're four meetings in, we're, we haven't gotten to the back and forth yet, like, what's, what do we need to do?
Let me just go to page one right by now, now that I understand what you're saying.
So can we schedule another meeting, because we've been kicking this around for about fifteen minutes.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Or we can, or you can look, and we have things given. It's only, it's only Monday.
Just do it after pre-gio, do another meeting beside the twenty-second.
That's correct.
That's what, that's what he said.
Right.
Okay, no, I agree with that.
I'm not gonna be here Monday, Monday's a holiday.
Oh.
It's an annual holiday. Most of you participate in that thing.
Well, I thought, I thought yesterday was the national holiday.
Somebody, my friends aren't working that day, and I was gonna take the day off.
I know.
So, you know, I, I understand, Jason, like, there, there has been some confusion, and I, and I, and I'm sorry, I mean, this is, the, last year when I did this, I did it with a board that had them. So, and, and it's a little bit of my, um, immaturity in, in doing it with a newborn. I mean, it's just, I, in my head, it was gonna work similarly, and I, and I guess I didn't communicate with it, what I thought in my head, as I don't think some of the people that have done it before did either, so. Um, but whatever you want.
Are you quite honest with me for this right now?
Sure.
There's five board members sitting here that are two minutes from being done with this.
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah, that's my honest opinion right now. But I'm willing to do an extra meeting, can we schedule it now?
Okay, yeah.
We have a meeting for the twenty-second.
He'll be here, he'll be here Monday.
So, um, so we have the twenty-second, are we, are we looking at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen? That's the rest of the week next week.
Sixteen, we got a feeling, right?
We do. It's earlier in the day, but- Yeah, you want to look.
Yeah, I, I have the full calendar, um, we could do the seventeenth, which is Wednesday, um, we could do from four to six.
I don't think you can get this done from four to six, with us though.
Well, that's four to six, more than, than the other four to six.
If you start from page one, and everybody's gonna go through, and if you, if you're gonna vote on it, that's fine, that's what you should do here, in my opinion, of doing this this year with the boards. Then, then you should, you should take it, you should vote on this, at each page at a time. Say, are you happy with this, they vote. Are you happy with page two, they vote. Are you happy with page three, they vote. You, you've kicked it around far enough.
Okay, well, then they can't be work sessions, they have to be, be those-
Well, it's not necessarily vote on, but you just, you, you gotta vote on, vote on.
Well, but, but technically, I mean, this is, this is supposed to be for discussion. So if we're actually gonna say, I mean, if we're gonna, I, I'm not saying it's a record World Cup vote, but if I'm gonna get four of you to say yes, we probably should call it a special meeting and not a work session.
And ultimately, the pages, they, they're connected, right? So, you know, I could agree on each page, but then we could be five hundred in the red, and I'm like, oh- So, you know, I could agree on each page, but then we could be five hundred in the red and I'm like, ooh, that's, it's not where we wanna land on.
The ultimate in the end is, is any board that members ever sat here that ever witnessed, in the end, if they have a gut feeling of what, what they feel about it, one way or the other, if they have a feeling, you're not gonna vote for this.
Correct, I know.
Well, if you have a gut feeling you're not gonna vote for this, that's gonna come out in the end, don't you?
That's true.
And it's gonna, it's gonna come down. You need four votes to have a public hearing, you need to have four votes to pass a budget. And, and, and that's what you gotta have with this numerical number you have here, make this thing work.
That's true.
And then, and that's what it's about. As far as the CIP thing, you can take and entertain that and work on that as you go. You don't have to, you can approve the CIP, the candid CIP that's listed here in your, help me out, Jason, I already called this in the planning commission. It's in our paper.
Captain, approve my plan?
Yeah. What do we call it then?
CIP?
Well, I thought it was a different meaningful.
Comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan, it's in that comprehensive, you can, you can, you can approve that as it's written. If, if, if everybody agrees with it, I mean, you can go back and change that at any point in time. And you can wait and, and you can, this brings up a good point, I hate talking to people who are gonna be here tomorrow. But here's, here's the thing, you can come back with these CIP items and you can wait and see how you end up at the end of the year with your fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and see where your fund balance is and you can decide just exactly what you wanna do. It was brought to my attention that, it was brought up that fund balance has to be part of the budget and part of the budget process, which it is. But you don't have a fund bal, a current fund balance because this year is not done. This year has money that you're appropriate. The only fund balance you have is for two thousand twenty-one. Or, excuse, two thousand twenty. And, and that's the only fund balance there is. You already have that written and you know what that is. You, you've already approved your quarterly numbers by law, the way we do it. So you know what the difference is, that's been done out of fund balance. So you know, we have a good number, we can run through a number and tell you exactly what your total general fund, fund balance is for the, for the year. So you can go back and after your audit in two thousand twenty-one here, you look at the CIP and say, hey, this is halfway through the year. We got our numbers together, things are starting to come around, the supply of canes better. We don't have as many people on COVID, everybody's liking everybody better. And you can take and turn around and you can take and do your CIP at that point in time.
That's right.
And you go have a lot better idea of how much money you spend, the money you've had. You already gonna know how much money you got from American Rescue Plan money and you're gonna have ideas by then what you're gonna spend your money on and, and move forward. But your general operating budget, you ought to be able to come to consensus on like what you feel about that. After this next meeting, I'll already decide that the preview, and then on the twenty-second is your final one. Since you're gonna take an whole public hearing at the next board meeting.
No, no, we're gonna decide when.
Right.
Okay.
Decide when.
And then, and then you're gonna approve it and, and you can go. But I, I'm gonna tell you right now, if you don't like it, if you don't like the budget, if you don't like the budget, if you don't like the budget, if I don't like the budget, you ain't gonna vote for it. You gotta, you gotta have four votes, make it all work. That's what it is. And it ain't the end of the world if you don't vote for it. I, I've, I've went on many a nights from this place and thought, I'm not gonna vote for the budget. You know what? I always do. And the reason why is because I have to keep track of it. But that's, that's just, that's the analysis of being a board member and it's just part of it.
So not to just.
This is kind of a challenge for me, it really has. Of all the years I've been around here, I've been here some eighty times, but this is kind of challenging. And I don't know, it was one meeting, man, I thought that was not me, I didn't even know what was going on, but I had somebody die on the floor once.
Yes.
I've had ten deaths in the last, in that week, so.
So Wednesday from four to six, or Thursday, we can work longer, but we would have to, I know some of you work outside of here. So it would, it would carve into your day a little bit if we did Thursday.
I would like or appreciate if we could go a Thursday.
Thursday?
Um, Thursday.
Eighteen.
Something on the eighteen.
Good road committee on the eighteen.
They can go the other way.
Well, well, what I was saying was.
Hey, that's fine with me.
From noon to five.
I'm taking Joe with me.
We really wanna do five hours, I guess.
Noon to five, do it.
Grab it.
I can start at three.
Three to five?
Three to five?
Okay.
Noon to five.
Or three to six, what's the time, does Rose start this?
Rose starts at six.
So you could go three to six if you wanna do.
Which day?
Technically, Thursday.
Eighteen.
Three to six, sounds good.
Eighteen, three to six?
Okay.
Anybody else? Takers? No takers?
Eighteen, three to six, okay. So what we plan, what we're gonna do is what you said, and what you were saying.
You don't have to vote for it. There's nothing saying when you take your job, you're on the office.
I can, I can go, we can go page by page if you, I can get a consensus. I call it consensus, majority, I can get a majority vote.
Yeah, that is just, some of us have done this more than others have.
I know.
Okay, so.
But we're, but we're available here, yeah.
So we're on page twenty-two?
Yeah, but we can, we, we can go back.
Page one?
Oh, no, oh, no, I'll write page, I'll start now that I'm understanding more of what you're saying.
So basically we have consensus on the first twenty-two pages.
I, I don't think so. I'm looking at Marie.
You're reaching your head out.
You might have to be to a tighter mask.
But, but what they're saying is they need four, which is the majority, so, you know, what I do is not that big a deal.
I'm just trying to figure out what we're gonna start on at the next meeting.
Well, that's done, so.
I, I don't, I don't.
I can guarantee you one thing, there'll be leftover money at the end of this year, the same as there is in every fiscal year. The same as there was last year. I don't know if there was any leftover money when I wasn't here for this eight years, 'cause I wasn't here, so I don't know.
There was.
There was a lot here when I got here, you know that. But the bottom line was all that's funny. But the bottom line is, everybody's gonna grow from this, and you already have. You're gonna, you're gonna learn, and you're gonna learn more and more and more about how government and county works. And it ain't perfect. It's not perfect, it's, it's, it's not perfect, but I mean, it's, it's, uh, at least you get to decide. Let me ask you this, how many things do you, as, as a group here, do you get to decide on about your federal government and the budgeting goes on in Washington?
Nothing.
So at least you get to have a say.
Could I ask one more question before we wrap up that I think will be helpful? You can tell me later if it is not. Karen, we used to have page two of the proposed budget was a list of general fund expenses altogether? Like page one is revenue altogether?
Yes.
Is that no longer a thing?
It, it is, but it's, it doesn't generate from the S and A like it used to. I would just, I'll just pick through and put it together.
Is that too much to, to add? It, it helped me understand, like, are we running five hundred thousand dollars over in the general fund? Or are we plus two hundred fifty? That could at least give us a sense.
And I spoke to Jason about that too, because that was one of the things that you had mentioned. It comes at the end in a resolution, and I'll set it up like that now and just mark a big draft on it. But you will have those numbers, but if those numbers were to change between now and then, obviously that'll change.
But this is by line item?
Yes.
Okay.
You could do it now for what you have.
Yes.
And you could get a feel for it.
Yes.
And then you could do it again.
Yes. It'll say township board, this amount.
When it comes to resolution.
Yes, right, yes.
And that's why you.
Supervisor, this amount.
Yeah.
Yes, for everything in the general fund.
Yes, thank you, that would be really helpful.
But it also has to be understood, your expenditures that you're talking about come out of your fund balance.
No.
No.
It comes out of the revenue.
Comes out of the revenue.
So.
General fund and fund balance are two different things.
Yes, they are. All I'm saying is that when you run a budget that's over seven hundred and whatever thousand, whatever it was, that it's gonna run over, where do those dollars come from?
That's what we're about to take them from.
Exactly.
I don't know that the general fund numbers are over.
Okay.
Where you're most likely gonna find your overage is, some of it's gonna come from the public safety.
The special revenue funds are the ones that's got the.
Yeah.
I want you to tag them all, general fund is, the one-on-one fund is good.
Yeah. We're not over.
And the format of your one-on-one fund was good, but the, but the special revenue fund's format is where you and I talked about.
Yes, it is.
Needs to be fixed. Your police and fire, your public safety.
So where does the money come from?
Come from, where are you gonna take it from?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So it can be taken from the fund balance, it can be taken from.
She'll, you'll know that as soon as she, she fills out she helped, you can take it, look at it. You can, you can decide as a board right then and there where you want.
Okay.
And you typically, what you do, and by, by resolution, we did this, in the past, you have, you were supposed to take a look at this, but you're, you're supposed to take your fund balance you have and keep your fund balance at a certain number.
That's what I asked him.
And that, that's why you did this.
That's the question I had, they said no.
Fund balance was a savings account of sorts to take in for future expenses that got more prevalent. Now, with that being said, look at the taxes and look how much taxes went, tax basis went up. And that, and that makes a big difference. I mean, it's, it's huge.
All right, so we're looking at Wednesday, the eighteenth from three to six.
Thursday.
Or sorry, that's Thursday, I'm sorry, I put Wednesday. Thursday's the eighteenth?
Yes.
Well, it's on the count.
Okay. You just started to show up.
Mr. Al, I think there's still a comment, by the way, so I, I don't wanna adjourn without.
Well, who's got a comment?
I think Ray does.
Another one? You had thirty minutes, Ray.
I would ask you a few questions. I have two things to say.
Nope, and that's public comments would be our next, which is hot, so everybody's done.
I'm gonna make three things then.
I think I know.
Okay, first thing is, I would like to have the, the Board of Trustees form or cause to have form an ad hoc committee for the, the one-hundredth anniversary of the James, the, the school bombing.
No.
The Cupola, blah, blah, blah. Why are you shaking your head?
I think that should be the bathroom museum committee.
Well, you can't say that, what I'm saying is, we should make it public that we want to help. We wanna get a consortium together to get this thing moving. Because right now we have fourteen different entities saying, yeah, that's a great idea, but nobody's getting together. That's all I wanna say about it.
Dr. Chris Hagerman.
He's together.
Next, next thing, I'm not gonna interrupt him, but.
We, we.
Anyway, paving of Drumhead Road, I think is a great idea. I think it would, in the long term, save a lot of money and a lot of hassles. And I know some people are, are against it. I was against it at first, but the more I think about it, I think getting over to where the major growth in the township is in a safer manner is a very good idea. And one last, the most important thing I wanna ask is, please allow me the opportunity to answer questions from all of you about the Park Lake Trail. I would like you to all to take a minute, write down however many questions you want, you know, tomorrow morning, tomorrow night. And then provide me a couple of minutes on the agenda, maybe Monday, as soon as possible, so that I can answer your questions and hopefully you guys could make a motion. Just like, just like Steve said, you know, the money always changes, the money always comes and goes. If you make a motion to say, yeah, we're in favor of the Park Lake Trail and Nature Preserve, boo, that's all.
So what you're asking is be on the agenda, not just public comments?
On the agenda, I would like to have like, as, as Al said, I've already been up here thirty minutes. I'd like fifteen minutes to talk about it officially, and I'd really like Stephen to be here.
The agenda's already made.
That's what I was just saying.
Well, but you always change it.
It's, it's, it is said, it'll have to be modified, but.
Yeah, you know, that was, just so that.
Change your own time.
Over, John.
Yeah.
Thank you. You give me the name and I'll call.
So we should bring your firearm, that's good.
Bullets are.
All right, somebody else for public comments? Good, Judy, okay.
If, 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 you know, November fifteenth might not be a vote on, but if you have a good time, we can just question, answer, it won't be here, so kinda like in the beginning.
All right, well, we're looking to adjourn? I'm gonna adjourn. Okay, second.
Support.
And thank you for your perseverance in my.
Ernie?
You get support.
Benji?
Yes.
Wiswaster?
Yeah.
Hal?
Yes.
Rosecrans?
Yes.
Eunspless?
Yes.
Amorigi?
No.
Thank you, Toby.
Your packets are in your mailbox.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Packages for what?
You're meeting money.
You don't get one printed, 'cause you're, you're a millennial.
You're one of the smarter millennials. Young guns.